Five thirty. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Eastman?
Here.
Commissioner Danger?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Mayor Well?
Here.
Maybe stand for the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance if you so desire.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we seek your help with our affairs today. Bless this meeting with your divine intelligence and help us to make the best use of our own. We are diverse opinions here, yet we wish to reach agreement satisfactory to all. Please share your wisdom with us to help us do right by all concerned. Thank you for your heavenly blessing. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Well, on new business, number five, we'd like to consider an ordinance to adopting a franchise agreement with Kansas Gas. You know that pretty much.
Any other additions or deletions? I move we accept the ordinance for the addition to number five in new business.
Second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do I have an approval of the agenda?
I make approval of the... I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We have a award and proclamation to 2019 AAA Traffic Safety Award presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. I'm Sean Stewart with AAA Kansas, and I appreciate the opportunity to be back again this year to present the Ark City Police Department with a special recognition. First, I want to thank and recognize Mr. Troy Wells from KDOT. He's a law enforcement liaison and works with agencies around the state and helps identify deserving law enforcement agencies to apply for this award, so I appreciate his help. Tonight marks the ninth consecutive year that your police department will be receiving a AAA Community Traffic Safety Award, which recognizes local law enforcement agencies for their effective and successful work in addressing traffic safety issues. Ark City PD is being recognized for a variety of programs and initiatives, including the highly successful SAFE program, seat belts are for everyone with Ark City High School, having a departmental policy requiring all employees to wear a seatbelt, conducting community education efforts such as the Community Safety Fair, Dare Camp, Coffee with a Cop, Neighborhood Watch, Popsicle Patrol, and bringing in the Highway Patrol's Seat Belt Convencer Demonstration. They're being recognized for their emergency medical response efforts as well, including preferred vehicle placement for accident prevention, occupant safety and traffic control, as well as medical kits for patrol vehicles and staff trauma training. All of these and more efforts have led to this award, and for the fourth consecutive year, your police department is receiving the Platinum Traffic Safety Award from AAA, which is the highest level that we give out. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank all of you as city leaders for your support of your excellent police department. That's obviously important in all of the communities that we honor law enforcement agencies. And finally, I'd like to congratulate Chief Ward, Lieutenant Holloway, and the entire police department on their excellent work and present them with the Platinum Award for their work in 2019. Chief, congratulations.
Thank you very much, sir. We're very proud of our police department.
You should be. So thank you so much.
I have one question. How many of all the police departments in Kansas are we probably one of the best, I mean, as far as getting this award?
Yeah, absolutely. One of thirty-eight police departments in the state that received the award, and I believe eighteen sheriff's offices, so a total of fifty-one law enforcement agencies across the state receive the award this year.
Yeah, but I mean, how they see it like four years in a row, I mean?
Yeah, I mean, one of the best in terms of nine years consecutive. We've given out the award for nine years, so they've received... Your PD has received it every year and consistently for the last four years.
That's a big honor. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Shows good leadership, it really does.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Yeah.
I would like to thank Sean and Troy for coming down and for AAA. As you know, we have a culture of trying to address traffic safety, and we understand that that is something that really affects everybody in our community. So the officers are doing a really good job in trying to lower those accident rates and keep everybody safe and make it a better place to live.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We greatly appreciate it. Thanks, guys. Good work. Thanks, guys.
Thanks for your time.
I have a visitor I'd like to recognize, Tom Langer from the KDHE.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Commissioner, it's good to be back again, I guess. I'm here tonight to give you an update on the status of our COVID-19 response in Cali County, let you know a little bit about the numbers, what's going on, why it should be a concern, and where we're at as a county and as a health department. Currently, as of today, our county remains in Phase Three of the reopening plan with restrictions on gatherings still in place. Our restrictions are not nearly as confining as a lot of other jurisdictions. We have not considered moving backwards. We are pretty pleased with staying where we're at, even though we have seen spikes and surges in the virus and outbreaks over the last couple of months. But I'll explain the reason why. Basically, we've not seen any cases that have sprung out of organized gatherings that have been done in the proper fashion. Therefore, we're not going to punish the community by taking those things away. Instead, we're going to encourage the proper organization of activities. One of the ones that I will point to specifically was an event that was to be held here in town in Burford that wasn't able to be held because of the fact that you couldn't have the large number of people that you wanted to in an indoor setting that was moved to an outdoor setting. And from every report that I get, it was very successful in its ongoing... You know, it was a concert, so everybody had a great time. And that's all I say. We've not seen anybody come back except for that. Our county activity, our response activity, has been and will remain elevated for quite some time. If you visit the Health Department's website, you will see on the forward pacing page, every day we update the numbers, with the exception of on the weekends when I decide what happens Friday is going to have to wait till Monday morning, and then I update it then. But it shows you an ever-growing set of numbers, and those will never go down. They will always only go up.
And why is that?
It's because of the fact that we keep track of how many tests we perform.
Okay.
Every case that we add to it only adds to the total. The active cases will fluctuate, okay? Hopefully, we don't see the one on the far right continue to go up, okay? And the one in the green will continue... should go up as well. What we like to see is that number getting higher and that red number, those few red numbers, stay low. But I will explain, you know, what we're doing and how it works. Currently, testing in the county is kind of leveled out, and we're doing about two-hundred-and-fifty tests every week. Now, that may not seem like a large number. You have to consider in March, we did sixty-one tests in the entire month. Now, we're doing two-hundred-and-fifty a week. Sometimes, when we've had peak times, we will have hit almost sixty in a day. That's a capacity we never had before, and it's continuing to expand. And it's good because it's the only diagnostic tool we currently have.
Excuse me, is this people coming to your office to have the test?
They don't come into the office. We have a drive-up lane. We're the only game in town in a lot of places. And we have it set up, and we have it pretty much reduced to a science now. It's kind of like going to McDonald's. You don't even get out of your car.
Right behind the McDonald's.
Drive-through, and you know, we put the tally board up as how many we have served. Of those twenty-nine hundred tests, your health department's done over twelve-hundred. That gives you an idea of the ratio of what we're doing as far as what public health does to private health, okay? And private health is hospitals and doctors' offices and clinics. We'll average twenty-five to thirty tests a day, and we get our average results back in about eighty hours. Now, that might seem like a little bit of time. If you go out into the private sector right now, volumes statewide and nationally have been up, and we have received notice from a lot of testing laboratories that they're right now taking up to a week to provide results back. We're getting them back generally in three days, and that's really, really good. That's also driven a lot of people to come to our county from outside the county to get tested, which has been one of those unintended consequences that we didn't really think about. But like I say, we're the only game in town in a lot of counties, especially in our region. I'd like to talk to you a little bit today, though, about these numbers. Today, we eclipsed twenty-nine hundred tests. You know, at the end of April, we had fewer than two-hundred-and-eighty in that category. So you can see that in the last sixty days, what we've done is phenomenal. I mean, it's wearing us out, but we're going to continue to do it because it's what we need to do. We have a hundred-and-sixty confirmed cases. Twenty-four of those are in the active illness stage. That number varies. It can vary quite greatly from time to time, especially after we see spikes in testing and results. The most heavily impacted region in our county for this illness has been and continues to be the ZIP Code six-seven-zero-zero-five, and it's centered right here in our Kansas City. I hate to report that to you, but it's true. The numbers don't lie. The data does not lie. There are over a hundred-and-twenty cases confirmed in our Kansas City. You can see, we've only had a hundred-and-sixty total cases. Over a hundred-and-twenty have occurred right here in this community. That is seventy-six percent of all cases occur in our Kansas City. Today, we've had ten hospitalizations and two deaths. The viral spread is especially active within specific population demographics, and I'm sad to say it shows no sign of slowing down. We know those numbers are going to go up because we know the people that are ill, and sadly, we know what they're doing and what it's going to result in. And there's nothing I can do to change it.
What do you mean by that?
I'm going to explain.
Okay.
The barriers and the reasons for the spread are very simple. It's a total lack of regard for public health directives, including quarantine orders and isolation orders by the people who test and are confirmed to be ill. They just simply do not care. They go about their business as if it didn't exist. They do not wear a mask. They do not stay home. They go out in your community. They go into the stores. They go shopping, and they expose everyone that they're around. That is the fact. There is no disputing it. I'm not trying to be defeatist. I'm not trying to be racist because when I talk about a specific demographic in a cohort, seven percent, seven percent of the population has accounted for seventy percent of the illness. Those numbers should shock you because I cannot fix this. There's nothing I can do. I am the person they have been taught to fear. I am the big white man from the government. They don't understand that I don't care how they got here, what they're doing here. I really don't. What I care about is the population and the health of my entire community, and that's why I'm going to need your help. I'm going to need it desperately, especially as we're trying to reopen schools. The barriers that lead to this condition include misrepresentations and outright lying to public health officials, not being able to properly identify these individuals with a true identity, the lack of understanding what their family status is. The only reason we're able to even get them into the testing line is basically because their employers make them. And so that's one of the good things about what's going on in the community has been the employee groups that have been very adamant about making sure they keep this out of their buildings, out of their industries. But I do know that this trend is going to continue. My biggest fear today, again, is that the blatant violation of quarantine orders and the social interactions that continue occurring are going to lead to other individuals becoming very ill, people who we do not need to be ill, those folks that are elderly, those folks that are living in long-term health facilities. It's only a matter of time before somebody lets their guard down and it gets in, and then we're going to have a real problem, one that I don't really want to, you know, have to report to anybody on. We find out... We're also finding out that, you know, there is person-to-person spread associated still with social activities, things like parties, some sports, although that's been really very small, travel to other places. And this is kind of an interesting one. People are really tired, and I understand it. I want to go on vacation, too, but it seems like the minute you cross that county line, you let your guard down. The mask goes off. You go about your business thinking this is just like it should be again, and you forget that what you're doing now is you're assuming the risks of everywhere you're going and everybody that you see. And then if you pick it up, you bring it back, you go back to work, and then you take ill and you spread it in the workplace, or you spread it to other family members, and we see that happening. When we take a look at the real spikes that have occurred over the last month and how it spreads, we see that we have very large cohorts of individuals that are living together, communal households. Some of those could be multi-generational and familial. We'll have grandparents, parents, children, all in the same house, where if one person gets it, they can take it home and they'll rapidly spread it to everybody in the family. And then we have other groups where they are just communal households, people who might share a connected ethnicity or work where they are all together in a house, and if one gets it, it spreads to the others, and there we go. And it's exacerbated by the fact that everybody living in our county doesn't necessarily work in our county. So we will have people that will live in our Kansas City and may work in Wellington, and they carpool together. Or they live here and they may work in Winfield, and they carpool together. The original outbreak started because one individual had to go to a party and came back and got in a carpool. And it went one, four, fifteen, twenty-seven, all within a week. I remember. That's how it works. And then once it's out of the bag, it's hard to round that up and put it back in a box. It just doesn't work that way. School planning has been going on robustly in our county, but I have to tell you that the previously mentioned behavioral patterns are an extreme concern to me because if I have people that are not concerned about their own health, they're certainly not going to think twice about sending their kids to school if they're sick. And that's something that this year we just cannot allow to happen. So we're working diligently with the school districts, including 470, to detail the steps that will have to be followed to make this school year successful and so that we can actually have learning occur and not shut it down. And I'm pleased to say that all of the districts are working very diligently to get that accomplished. We'll be putting out some guidance for them within the next couple of weeks. It'll detail the steps that will be followed when an individual in a family that has children tests ill and then how that will affect the family unit because that's truthfully how we're going to treat this. Families will quarantine together. One person gets sick, the entire family will be sick because we're not going to allow individuals to go into the schools and perhaps carry it. One of the nice things I'd like to report about this illness so far is that in our age cohorts, when we take a look at the distribution by age, in the zero-to-ten-year category, we've only had three children sick, three. All three of them caught it from their parents, not one of them picked it up on their own. In the next cohort, eleven to twenty years, we've had twenty-one illnesses. Of those twenty-one, eighty percent are in the seventeen-to-twenty-one category. What does that tell us? It tells us that the kids aren't getting sick. And I see kids at the playground every day, and they're not wearing masks, and they're playing together, and that's very encouraging to me because it tells me that hopefully, especially in the elementary schools and maybe even into the middle school, we're going to be able to keep this at bay. It's when they start driving that I'm going to start worrying because then all of a sudden, they're a little bit more socially active. So, Chief, you know, this year, we may be partnering on a whole lot more than seatbelts. Anyway, that's what's going on in the county. It's concerning, but I'm not defeated by this. There isn't anybody that's going to be happier to see this pandemic put to rest than yours truly will be. I think if we take some simple steps to get things under control, Cali County will be one of the safest places in the state to live. Right now, I'm not afraid, you know. I'm concerned. Some days, I'm just downright mad because people don't do the right thing. I've been asked questions about these things that hang off of our faces. I despise them. I hate wearing it. I always have, but I do it because I'm the only person in this room that thinks it's held the virus in his hand, mixed it up, put it in the machine, and see it go bang in front of his eyes. And when I do that, I promise you, I'm not taking risks with my health. I wear a proper mask. I wear a proper lab attire. I wear gloves, everything, so that I can walk away from my job every day and not take this on my life. I wear the mask because I respect you because in this room, right now, there's only one person that I know everything that person has done for the last fourteen days, every risk that person's taken, and that's me. And I will not expose anybody in this community to what I may have done. So if you can wear the mask, I hope everybody will do so. I also don't believe that the law, in public health law, extends me the power to tell somebody who is healthy that they must wear a mask. Once you turn... Once you get the virus, once you are tested, then I do have some authority. But as you can see, that's been pretty much ignored by a lot of people anyway. So I applaud everybody that does so. I think the question I've asked or the things I've implored people to do, especially where that is, is to be kind to one another. There's a lot of anxiety. There's a lot of anger about this virus. I've had people tell me, "Oh, it's going to disappear on the third of November." And I stand before you tonight saying that this virus is not going to go into a hole on November fourth. It's going to be with us, but I hope the politics surrounding it does because that will make my job a lot easier. And so now I'm going to stand for any questions that you have before I have to run off to Board Health Meeting this evening.
I've got one question.
So Jay, what can I...
You think it's the lack of education that's... like a lot of these people? I mean, you know, as a commission, I don't know how we could, you know, help you. I mean, because we can't force... I mean, we can't demand, you know, them. But my question to you is maybe putting out, you know, if the kids go back to school, maybe sending things home for the parents to read, you know, about, you know, what you just told us tonight and stuff, you know, some educational stuff, you know, maybe that'll start, you know, helping. I'm just throwing it out loud. You know, I don't know.
Commissioner, I'll tell you what I know, okay, what's hidden within the numbers. And I mentioned the word racism earlier on and how everybody is absolutely tied to that right now. But what I'm telling you, our largest at-risk cohort is the Hispanic-Latino community. And I'm not a hundred percent certain how many of the more recent newcomers to our community have children and how many of them are going to be going to our schools. We won't know for a little bit, a little bit. I believe honestly that those individuals that have been part of our community now for two to three years or longer perhaps understand a little bit more and that their children will actually model the behavior that we're asking for. I hope so. It's what we're kind of banking on. But I cannot get through to the others. We try. We message. We speak to them in their own language, and it is like talking to a wall. They will tell me one thing, and they'll turn around and do the exact opposite. Now, it's not just that group. We have pictures where people have turned in other people who were under quarantine, and they were seen in this community out at garage sales, in the Walmart, and just totally ignored it. And their employers took action against them, which I was absolutely thrilled with because, you know, we were... We've been stepping it up so that Cali County doesn't look like Ford County or Seward County or Fennel County, and we keep our numbers under control. It's been a difficult task, but it's not been unattainable. And so, you know, we continue to battle this. I thought for certain with hospitalizations and even a death within that cohort, that would get their attention. And we heard them talking about it, but it doesn't really seem to have made a big impact. And that's the truth, and that's what I will report to.
I was going to ask you about how you're going to go about opening the schools. You touched on it a little bit, but...
The reason that we're... The reason that we are very excited about this going on, Commissioner, is the fact that we see the numbers in that group. We see what's happening with children. And we don't... And we believe that if we can, we can follow the simple protocol of identification, isolation, recovery, and return, that we will be able to do this properly. There is going to be some interruption to individual students because if they are choosing to go to school in an in-classroom fashion and a family member takes ill and they have to be removed for a two-week time period, they're going to have to switch from in-person learning to distance learning, but that's being handled by the schools. It will not be a continuum that's broken. It's just going to be the way it will be. I've told the districts, it's not if, it's when, and they're working diligently to create the right plans. And those plans will be followed. We may not hit it right one hundred percent of the time, but we'll have enough flexibility to take a look at that and work with them and get those things adjusted as we move along. This includes athletics, although it may be in a little bit different fashion this year than what they're used to. Cali Cup may not have packed stands this year. You know, we may ask that you have to spread out a little bit more or maybe not allow as many people. Your volleyball matches won't have as many people in the gym because the facilities are going to be regulated as to what capacities will be. But if we follow those steps, we'll get through this year. They'll get to participate. They'll do their athletics. They'll do their activities, and we believe that we can be successful in doing it. And we will be diligent, and we will be watching everything, every step of the way to protect our kids and also to protect others who might be visiting our county, other students from other districts. So those are all things that we've been working on, and that's why I think we're going to be able to do it. I'm very confident that we can.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for coming, Thomas. If your education doesn't help them, how can a commission encourage them?
I take a look at some of the things that we have available to us. Utility belts go to everybody. I think no matter where you live, you're going to get one. And I know we've messaged some things, and that was... And I know we've messaged some things in, in those in the past. If everybody understands what the issues are and we talk about it openly without a lot of emotion. Perhaps. The message will begin to resonate. Right now, I kind of feel like that lone wolf baying at the moon. You know, they come to see us, this guy at the health department tells us to do this, but then we don't see him anymore. And we go somewhere where they feel safe. And. The idea is to get multiple people saying the same thing, preaching the same, the, the same chorus, so to speak. So that the community understands what's going on and the risks they're taking. It's, it's abhorrent to look at the numbers and say seven percent, you know?
Contrary to seventy percent?
Seven percent of the people are causing seventy percent of the problem? You know, I don't know that there's anything else that we would allow that to happen. And I'm not trying to, to be heavy-handed, you know, at all. It's just, this is an issue and we have to address it. Now going back to school, I think might help. I really truly do. Because again, we're going to be sending messages home and the kids are going to know. They might know more than their parents about how to handle this. You know, and, and to think that our, our kids can teach us, well, hopefully it will happen. Because that, that is my bigger concern right now.
Well, we're not going to change personal feelings at all, you know? We can suggest it and people are going to say it's invading my privacy or whatever. And I, I understand that, but I agree with what you said earlier. They don't have any consideration for the other people around them. And so how, how do you change that?
I don't know.
I don't either.
I really truly don't. And I respect, I respect everyone's decisions. I really do. I mean, that's, that's why early on, like I said, I kept my powder dry. People said, Tom, are you going to put out a mask mandate? And I said, no, it's not my authority to do this. It really isn't. This isn't my face, you know? I know Chief in his picture with the mask on probably looks a lot better. Sorry, Dan. But in, in reality, I'm looking forward to when I don't have to wear one of these at all again. But I also understand the power of what this device does. It's, it's a shield. You know, anybody, anybody that, that works in a, in a doctor-patient. Relationship, they understand why we wear them, you know, and we understand the efficacy behind them. It's not a hundred percent, but in this situation, it allows me again to put a barrier between myself and another individual. And right now, the name of the game is don't get this virus. That's the name of the game. And if you don't, you win.
Do you think the schools will do a good job of educating the, the students? The little ones, I don't think they're going to figure it out, but the middle school age kids.
You know, I'm going to share, I'm going to share a, an observation and I've made a lot of them over the summer. Because I've actually gone out and I've watched the members of our community. I've gone to ball games, I've gone to events. Not so much because I had anybody on the field, but because I wanted to see what was happening. With players, with the crowd, you know, with the general dynamic. And this was after the, the mask brouhaha all came about. What I noticed was that people will comply, but most people feel very comfortable, especially in their intimate settings. If it's my family, we're all going to sit together and we're just going to, we're going to go ahead like nothing's going on because we trust one another. But when you get into the larger crowds, that's where I still have the biggest concerns. Which is why we're going to continue to limit those big, big crowds. You know, we're not going to risk it because we get one person in there that might be able to spread it. Their results are, you know, could be catastrophic. As far as, you know, do we think, you know, we're, we're going to turn the tide one hundred percent? It's going to be slow. I was reading today, you know, two, two reports about the effectiveness of a vaccine. And our ability as humans to develop the appropriate antibodies in our systems and the appropriate B and T cells. That will allow us long-term, you know, immunity to COVID nineteen or, or SARS-CoV-2. And. What the conclusions to those studies are. Is something that everybody knew, is that we really don't know. I, I spoke to one of the school districts earlier this week, well, yesterday as a matter of fact. And I told them that if I could have looked six months into the future to know what I know today, back in March. That we would have had prom and we would have played basketball and we would have had baseball. And graduations would have gone on as planned because we didn't know. And so we reacted based upon what the health experts, whoever they may be, were telling us. Yeah, we were prepped for the zombie apocalypse. And instead, you know, we had a paper cut until this, this summer, when it really kind of came home and, and showed us what it could do.
Till we actually got out and started.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we had to. And I'm not, you know, I hate to sit there and make it sound like it's some kind of a big experiment, but we had to. Could you imagine if we had done nothing and now we're saying let's go back to school without having any idea what to expect? You know, we've seen what this can do. We've seen the, we've seen the rush on the systems. We've seen what we can handle and what we know, you know, what we can't handle. So now, going into the school year, I feel very confident that we know where those warning points are and where the triggers will be. For us to stand up and say, okay, now I have to take action that you may not like as public health officer, but this is.
The way I see it, Tommy, is that I think the teachers are going to have to have curriculums to, to, to teach the little kids, you know, about this thing. So they can go home and talk to their parents. I know, take a long story short, the Optimist Clubs, we've been doing this for, since nineteen nineties. Having the, every four years of general election, I mean, the presidential election, every kid votes in town.
Right.
From kindergarten through twelfth grade. And you'd be surprised when those kids come home, they always, a lot of them ask their parents, are you registered? Can you vote? Because I'm voting, you know? Well, we got a lot of people that, that registered up to this thing, you know, it's the same thing, you know?
Exactly.
The kids will, you know, drive nuts till they do something, you know? We hope.
One of the, one of the amazing things that the last, not really the last, but close to the last comment I'll make. Is, is about the wearing of masks in schools. This was also one of the items that has really frustrated me because. Here has been, here has been the playbook. Political individuals will tell us what we should do. When it goes sideways, they say consult your local public health officer. If they would have just let us consult the local public health officer from the get-go. I guarantee you, I wouldn't be putting toddlers in masks because I know what the preschoolers are going to do. And it's going to be comical to watch. But I mentioned that I, I watched people recently, I, I actually went to the grocery store, which even on the days when I am in the most fit condition. And in perfect health, I really don't like to do. I watched shoppers. And I watched the mom come in with her children. She had two of them, one was probably about a fourth grader and the other one was probably just ready to start kindergarten. All three people had masks. The mom wore hers like this. The kindergartner wore hers like this. The fourth grader wore it impeccably. She knew and she hadn't been taught yet. She knew. She went, she knew what that little hand dispenser was. She washed her hands. She followed her mom around. She didn't touch things. I was impressed. I said, there's hope. There's hope. Yeah.
It's just repetition.
It is repetition. And it's not like we're trying to brainwash anybody. We really truly aren't. The other thing I can tell you is to a, to a kid and to a coach. Those that I have spoken with that are athletes, especially in our high schools. They know what the expectation is for them this year. They're out there conditioning and everything else. And when they get together, it's, it's like a, it's like a drill. The masks come on. While they're on a practice field. And I played the game. I can only, I can't even imagine what it would be like and how nasty this mask would get if I was out there playing ball in the summertime. So I applaud them and the coaches are telling them, this is what we have to do this year or we won't have a season at all. So they get it, they understand. And I think that in that respect, we will still have people that won't comply. But I think the vast majority will because they've got, they have a stake in this. They don't want to have, happen to them in their senior year, what they saw happen to the seniors last year. So. Any other questions? Ask me back anytime.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just keep us posted on it.
I, I, I will. Trust me, as we get into the, this, you know, the, the. Start of the school year, you know, after, after Labor Day, which by the way, I think was a smart thing to do. Um, just gives the teachers more time to prepare. We'll see exactly what happens and you'll hear a lot. Hopefully, everything will go well. And one of these days soon, we'll be looking in the rearview mirror saying, hey, do you remember when we had to wear masks to the commission meetings?
A few years.
Yeah.
Thank you for what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Not a problem.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm proud to, I'm proud to be able to do it in the county. I, you know, honored to, to serve the individuals here. And anytime, you know, just chat with that gentleman and he can get, he can get to me or some of you have my, my email and the number. You know how to, you know how to contact him.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Think our next item is the consent agenda or is there any further comments from the audience?
Needing a motion to approve the twenty, July twenty-first, twenty twenty regular meeting minutes is written.
I'll second that.
Some part of consent, yes. All those in favor say a.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Oh, business, we are going to hold a public hearing to receive the public comment regarding the proposed twenty twenty-one budget. Are there any individuals who would like to make a comment? From the public? Seeing nobody jumping to the mic.
You have anything, Kathy? No?
No, basically, are you, is the public very close?
Yeah.
Are you closing?
I guess she opened it, closed it.
Well, okay, you can either close it or continue it.
You'll never know.
Well, probably kind of need to know whether to close it. Basically, we're down to the two final steps, hold the public hearing, which you, I don't know if you.
We just did.
And then either tonight or at the next meeting, you can adopt the budget as it was prepared and printed in the paper. I do, the only additional information I have from when we talked last, it was late yesterday, we did get word on our health insurance. We had originally budgeted in ten percent increase. We upped it to fifteen percent. We found out that it is estimated at twenty-one to twenty-one point five percent increase. So we will be meeting with them, having further discussion, research our options and figure out where we go with that. But as far as the budget, we, this is basically the max that you can adopt. You can adopt something less if you like.
So that's just going to be, that's just going to be an eternal correction, I mean.
We may want to discuss. Either, unless you're going to leave it up to staff, I would think the commission may want input on, on. How we mold this budget for the general fund a little more.
Instead, staff needs to do that. I mean, I'll just, you know.
Well, staff or commission or joint together. Uh, not all of it comes out of the general fund because, um, you know, your water utility people, it. Comes out of there or sewer or whatever, depending on where their wages come out of, but the bulk of it is general fund. So that's the only thing that may take some further discussion.
Did you say that's a twenty-one percent increase?
Twenty-one percent.
But that's, that's because of what happened three years ago or two years ago or.
Well, it's just because we have several of them that have very high claims. Like I said, we just got a preliminary. And we haven't even met with our Blue Cross rep or researched our other options at this point. So that will happen within the next, next week for sure, at least the start of it, so.
You know what? Go ahead.
With that being said, I know we've had plenty of discussion on it. I don't think we need to wait for the next meeting. I mean, I'm ready to.
I was going to suggest the next meeting to find out how much it is and if, if it's changes or if it doesn't.
No, I don't think it's going to matter.
Well, it won't, it won't matter as far as.
I don't mind going ahead and approving the, the budget as is. I mean, because we're not going to be able to raise it any. The one thing I think we should do, especially in the year twenty twenty with the way costs have gone or just the way life been and expenses have gone is. Maybe in November, December, October, somewhere towards the middle, end of the year. Just sit back down and say, okay, here's what we've approved. Are we financially able to go ahead with all these purchases, with all these projects, with all these things? Or are there things within this budget that may need to be taken out to make up for any increase? Whether that be health insurance cost or whatever COVID or whatever pandemic things hit between now and the end of the year? I think approving the budget, we just know we can't.
Right.
Go over it. We can take stuff out and I think if we approve the budget. I would suggest maybe at least in November or sometimes towards the end of the year before we give the money. I know at the beginning of the year.
Before we start making commitments.
Before, we usually make commitments January one of the year, but before we start giving those commitments out.
Reevaluate the situation.
Reevaluate and say, okay, yeah, we're going to give you a commitment. We may not be able to give you the full amount, January one, let's give you some and then see where at in March. Or, you know, at least give us a little leeway before we overextend ourselves if there are.
Necessary.
Necessary things come up between now and then that would be my thought, but I don't want to approve the budget.
Well, that being said, I'll make a motion. We consider the ordinance adopting the two thousand twenty-one budget for the city of Arkans City.
I second it. This is a real call vote.
Commissioner Eastman?
No.
Commissioner David?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Watts?
Yes.
We'll have a signing party after the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thanks, Kathy and Jennifer. I don't think she's here with you. Thank her too, so.
She's very integral to it.
Mike? We're going to hold a public hearing and consider the resolution declaring structures. Located at four fifteen East Tyler, thirteen twenty-one South B, six oh nine South Fifth and four twenty-seven South Sixth. As unsafe, dangerous. And the directing that said structures be repaired, short or otherwise made safe or in the alternative of really well demolished.
Commissioners, ma'am, there, I've got four locations here. Let me show you. First one is four fifteen East Tyler Avenue. And pretty much that's all the description of it. And I will say there is some pictures prior to this, that when there was not a lot of vegetation around, we can have better pictures. So I tried to take pictures again, the same location, so there might be vegetation in the way, but it's still the same way as it was.
Yes.
There's a picture of the front of the house there.
Isn't there more vegetation around it? You can hardly see it.
Yeah, well, this is back in two thousand nineteen in the wintertime, but if you look at.
Did we?
Right there's a big hole in the roof. And it's been like that for quite a few years because it's mold, a lot of black mold inside the house. The property owner is opening it up so we can inspect it.
Do they live in town? Do, do they live in town? The owners?
I think they live in Winfield.
Okay.
There's a foundation problems right there. A lot of the windows and everything's already boarded up and some of the doors. Some more pictures of it. The roof is a bad repair, excuse me. This was taken in last week, in fact. That's why the vegetation's all green. Again, picture of the front of the house. And right there is that hole in the roof I was talking about earlier. Better picture of it. And the chimney's even falling apart up there now too.
Looks like it's going in the roof.
Looks like.
Same thing there. There's a, the hole. Windows boarded up all through there. Basically the same condition as it was before. Any questions on that one? Next one is thirteen twenty-one South B Street. There's the backyard right there where the, part of the roof is falling completely in. Yeah, as you can see, that was in two thousand nineteen. That's the garage in the backyard. Yeah, as you can see, that was in two thousand nineteen, that's the garage in the backyard, falling apart. The, uh, roof has fallen in on that part of the house right there, completely caved in. Another picture on another view of it. That's the front of the house there, this is the back
Is that the handicap ramp?
Yeah, that's a handicap ramp. Yeah, we, uh, got ahold of the owner, told him that, you know, if this goes through tonight, we'll give him time to remove all that stuff.
Okay.
And this is the back addition that was put on there, that had foundation issues, underneath there, not very good picture, sorry. And then There's the back of the house there, as you can tell, the roof decking, shingles are all gone from it, so it's had a lot of water get into it, and, uh, mold. Some more pictures, and this is in twenty twenty, of the back. Right there is another picture of the roof has fallen in. The next one's six oh nine South Fifth, is there any questions on that other one? This one right here. It's got a decaying roof right there that is leaking, this is in the porch area, front porch. Same thing right here, that's all rotted from, uh, uh, moisture getting into the wood and falling apart.
Is that some sort of plumbing?
So, I'm sorry, what?
Is that some sort of plumbing, pipes going across there?
You know, I didn't look at it that close, I can tell you for sure. It looks like, if I remember right, it's just a piece of PVC pipe stuck up there for some reason. And then here again, some more decay on it. Now, you can tell right there is the end of that PVC pipe, they just stuck it out, in there to get rid of it. Some more structural problem with the house right there, that beam is not even attached to a lot of those roof members right there.
Is that the only one?
Do what?
Is that the only one beam that's not attached?
No. Well, there, some of them are kind of loose away from the beams, but that one is completely loose.
All right.
That's why I took pictures there. In fact, you can see there are nails that were toenail into it, and they're not even attached to it now. Some more of the decay. This is the foundation right there, that is part, uh, tied into the house, and right here is your porch area, that comes out, so you can tell that the foundation is actually deteriorating bad, too. Structure is very unsound. Same thing here, we got cracks, right there's separation. Got a crack in that foundation right there, that's towards the back of the house. And then we have the overhang with the fascia, it's all rotted and falling apart. And to tell you the truth, I don't know why I took that picture. And right here, you, oop, sorry. Right here, if you look at this, you can tell that that foundation is actually pushing out, right there, so it's very unstable. And that's the front of the house there, that window right there, doesn't have any glass in it, completely missing. And then here's the shed, as you can tell, it's leaning, this right here is improper, uh, plumbing, done by that homeowner years ago. Then, this is a newer picture, that's actually some of the, uh, ceiling inside of the porch area, that has literally fallen all through. Same thing, here's your fascia, it's completely gone now. Any questions on that one?
I don't know how it's standing up.
Okay. Four twenty seven South Sixth Street. Here's the, uh, front of the house right here, that's the front porch, all falling apart. Right there, there's no support underneath that part of the porch at all. Same thing right here, they just put some plywood over that, but that's completely missing, and that's on, on the house. More deterioration right there on the structure, on the foundation. And these are the ones that were taken back in two thousand nineteen, and as you can tell, there's some doors and some windows missing. And here again, they just patched that in there to hide it, on that. And then more windows that are open, and let's see here. This is the inside of a part of the house, taken through a window that we, uh, took pictures through. Debris inside, sheet rock falling down. That's the, uh, north side of the house. This is the one I took back in last week, new pictures, as you can tell, up there, the windows are missing up here, windows missing here, they've gone in and taken windows out. Same thing right here. Windows are gone, and these are the up-to-date pictures. More windows made out, and then the plywood of this, after they took the windows out. Windows missing all through there, every one of those windows are gone. This is the picture I took of the ceiling the last time, through the window, and this is, I think, in the kitchen area, but all that's fallen down lately. Don't leak each. That's it.
I have a question for you, obviously, they're not probably, they're probably not gonna fix these out, is that, I mean, it looks like, I mean, they're too far gone, is that right?
Well, the last one that I showed you, we talked to the owner, and, uh, he's in favor of having it tore down, and he's thinking about, uh, trying to do it himself.
Okay. What about the other ones?
Uh, the other ones, the ones on Tyler. Talked to them, and, uh, they're in favor of having their demo too, because they're, they're an older couple, and they just
But they'll be willing to pay for the demo on it, or?
Uh, I told them they would be responsible for the, for that, that would go on specials on their taxes if they don't pay for it.
Okay. So, um, what do we give them, sixty or ninety days to have it taken care of?
Uh, once the publication comes out, they have thirty days
Thirty days, okay.
To, uh, get a permit to try to fix it up, then they can go ninety days to get it done.
Okay.
If they want to demo it, it's thirty days after publication, then fifteen days to have it demoed.
Okay, so it's within ninety days for everything, basically?
Uh, to fix, uh, fifteen days, after thirty days, and to have it demoed.
I don't think anybody's gonna fix these up.
I doubt it very much.
I don't think so.
They've said like that for years.
Yeah. So you need a motion for each one, or can we do them all together?
Okay, I move that we declare a resolution that declare structures located at four fifteen East Tyler Avenue, thirteen twenty one South B Street, six oh nine South Fifth Street, and four twenty seven South Sixth Street as unsafe and dangerous, and directing that said structures be oh, I guess demolished. I don't think they're be, can be repaired.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second regarding the demolition of the residence listed, all those in favor, is this a roll call?
No.
Voice, voice.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. How many more did we have, huh? How many more do we have?
They come for you? How much time do you have? There's quite a few. I'd say there's at least probably fifty in this town that can be brought before you for consideration, at least fifty. And then there's probably another fifty on top of that, that are getting to that point that, in a few years, they will be at that point to have to take action on.
Are, are you giving them people notice?
Yes, yes.
That are looking like within a couple of years?
What we do is, uh, we'll go by, a lot of times, there'll be, uh, neighbors, or somebody like that, they'll, uh, concerned citizen will ask us to investigate it. We'll go by there, and if the property is in immediate danger of somebody squatting in there, or something like that, when danger to them, then we'll take action right then and there, and get ahold of them. Usually what we do is we'll send them a certified letter stating that the property is in disrepair, and that they need to fix it up. Sometimes they sign for it, sometimes they don't.
Okay.
But we do get ahold of this, sir.
All right.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
New business?
Consider a resolution of the city of Arkansas City authorizing improvements to the city public water supply system, as a binding for the payment and cost thereof.
Do you have some comments?
She does.
She does.
Well, this seems a little redundant, because you're really basically ratifying improvements that were made to the water treatment facility, and some other utility improvements is that KDHE requires in order for us to refinance the existing bonds. And that's part of, uh, part of the bond refinancing is two KDHE loans, one was for the water treatment plant, one was for improvements to the water system prior to that, and the other is a twenty thirteen general obligation bond.
And that was a ballpark, some other things that included, wasn't it?
Correct.
Yeah.
And we're estimating almost two, two point one, almost two point two million dollar savings doing this, so.
And, and two years earlier getting it paid off, I think.
Yeah, and a couple of years later, whatever, man, yeah.
It's a big deal.
It's huge. It's I mean, you got some stuff getting paid off in twenty thirty six to twenty thirty eight, some getting paid off in twenty twenty five to twenty thirty two, I mean, there's a lot of that's, that's gonna be, it'll be nice to have some, some of that knocked off.
Is, I is there any way, like, we got a five hundred thousand dollar KDHE loan, uh, that's, goes for another ten years? Is, if something happens, good happens, can we pay off a smaller loan on that?
Uh, you mean after we refinance, can we pay it off earlier then?
Yeah.
It depends on what kind of bid we get for these bond issues, and what the callable terms are. That was one of the things that was in the one that we just redid for the PBC for the hospital.
Yeah.
Gave us a callable feature fairly early on, which will enhance the savings on it.
I think they'll have, you know, within five or ten years, you'll be able to, be able to pay it off early, and they'll have those features.
Yeah. We went through it so fast Friday then.
Yeah.
The main thing that we proposed with them, they, the, the first proposal that came was basically an overall savings, and would have reduced our payments, keeping the existing timelines.
Mm-hmm.
But what we had discussed with them and brought for you is maintaining the level of payment in order to pay them off early.
Yeah.
I agree.
Which basically doubled the savings.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, with that being said, I make a motion, we consider the resolution of the city of Arkansas City, Kansas authorizing improvements to the city public water supply systems, and providing the payments of the, of the cost thereof.
Second.
Sorry.
I have a motion in two seconds. It's right here.
There's two different ordinances.
There's two, you have to, to do the second one, you have to do the first one first, and then this one.
Okay.
Okay.
I was getting ahead of it.
Well, do, all those in favor say aye.
Bro, is this a roll call vote, or a voice, right here?
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the motion carries.
And then the second resolution
I'll make a motion to consider, yeah, this is basically the second part, I'll make a motion to consider the resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation refunding and improvement bond series twenty twenty of the city of Arkansas City, Kansas.
Second.
I have a motion in two seconds, once again.
Once again.
To consider the resolution offering the sale of general obligation refunding bonds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Move forward with that, then.
Thank you.
This is the one they moved from Burford.
Yes. I know, they said they already have security, and the Burford has the licenses they're needing, I believe, is that correct, so?
Yes, it is, it was.
I think that's what she told us.
I, I talked to him about security, uh, and segregating people who are of age from not age, and, uh, told him what we needed, and I told him I needed to have that approval of who it was, and I haven't heard anything back, so I don't know who the security is, but not contracting with us, and so I don't know who
Did Randy, you remember, I thought she said the college or something?
No.
I don't know.
No, Frank's class is in session, um, she did say that Frank had a couple that were in his class before, that maybe wanted to do it, she was gonna check, and I haven't heard.
Yeah, I thought they did too.
Are they going, planning on running a fence through the middle of the rotunda?
Yes, they're gonna, they're gonna have it separated, and they're gonna have space between, uh, areas, so you just can't pass
Snow fence you're talking about.
Yeah, snow fence, okay. Do you feel comfortable if, uh, with not knowing who that's gonna be, that's this Saturday?
I guess I should say, do you feel comfortable?
Well, I don't know.
No, I don't.
Huh. I'm surprised she hadn't come back with anybody.
Yeah, I, I mean, we, we, I, she was fine with the compromise on the design, and how we were gonna have it set up, and I lowered the number of security that she needed, and I only had three on that night, and she did not want to, it's a benefit, so she didn't want to spend a lot of money, so she was looking for a cheaper option than the property security.
It's a quandary, it's a benefit.
I mean, it's
What, what do you guys feel like?
Well, I'm, I'm, I feel pretty safe on that, I mean, it's a benefit for her, they're trying to raise money for her cancer thing, and
For Piper Lee, yeah.
Yeah, Piper Lee, and it's run through the Burford, through the chamber type thing.
And, and this is our city.
Yeah, I mean
And Burford visit have always done things, from the ones, like, events I've been to, for the most part, I mean, Chief Work may be seats differently, but I've always seen it, they've done things right, and they haven't tried to ruffle feathers, and done things to get bad graces with any within the city or the community, and
That's true, that's true.
And what Piper's done, she's done benefits for other people in this community, and, I mean, this community's always done great things to help others out, and this is one of those things I feel, I would feel comfortable moving forward with.
Why don't you make that motion then?
I will make a motion to consider an ordinance exempting the application of KSA forty one dash seven one nine D to allow the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor at a designated area of Wilson Park during the Piper Lee benefit from five to nine PM, Saturday, August eighth, twenty twenty.
Second that.
I have a motion and a second, Leslie.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Giger?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes. Leslie.
Consider first reading of an ordinance modifying municipal code, part two, chapter two, article three, division one, to amend general provisions for city boards, commissions, committees, councils, and task force, division three, to remove the retired senate advisory council from the municipal code, and division four, to amend the equal opportunity and accessibility advisory board's purpose and duty.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. As we discussed briefly on Friday, this is really kind of an attempt to clean up code to match how these boards are functioning, and sort of remove the red tape on the council, which could continue to serve as an advisory committee for the senior center as the members see fit, um, but they wouldn't have to follow the regulations that a lot of other boards have. We just don't think that it totally suits the purpose of the way that that committee has developed. Uh, we did have a special meeting Thursday with the equal opportunity board, uh, both Randy and Larry were there, so was Kristen Sparks, the director of senior services. And she did, uh, talk to the board at length about her view of things, and how things were functioning, and she is perfectly comfortable with all the proposed changes. We didn't actually have a formal vote, like it says in the action item, I apologize for jumping the gun, but it was a verbal consensus that the board was entirely comfortable with the ordinance as presented. However, I would ask that you consider tabling this for a second reading at the next meeting, um, as I am not particularly comfortable with section one. I think we're gonna go ahead and just delete that entirely, and that has However, I would ask that you consider tabling this for a second reading at the next meeting, um, as I am not particularly comfortable with section one, I think we're gonna go ahead and just delete that entirely, and that has nothing to do with the content, it's due to the fact that, um, we have not fully codified in our online code changes we made to that section last year, and I don't like to double stack those before we can get caught up, so, there's no changes in there that were particular need, honestly, so I don't think that it's necessary. Um, so what we'll bring back to you in two weeks will just be sections two and three. Do you have any questions about-
Have both boards been, they're both aware of this change?
Yeah, we've been talking to them about it for probably close to two years.
And they're overall both fine with it, so.
I haven't heard any negative comments. Now, the council, like I said, has not had a meeting since probably February, being with the senior center, it's not been open, but by tabling it, it gives another two weeks if there's any concerns for them to communicate about.
I would like, at least, if there are any concerns, they can, you know, voice it to any of us, if they, for some reason, have any, didn't feel comfortable doing it, I haven't heard of any, but, so.
And again, they can continue doing everything they've been doing to this point, the, the, the things that they do regularly aren't even in our code, so this, I don't think will change anything for them.
Do you think, give them a little bit more time than two weeks, I mean, you know, it's gone on for quite a while, I mean, do you think-
There's no hurry, but I'll ask Kristen to reach out to them individually.
Okay, if she, if she can't buy, the next meeting, just, we can just wait, because it's nothing, nothing serious.
I did want to point out to you, uh, one change that's in there that isn't technically related to this, um, in section three under the Equal Opportunity Board, we did add, it would be section two dash one thirty-six, purpose and duties, uh, next to last page of the ordinance. We did add a clause or any other protected class, you might recall, this is something we added into our personnel policies as well, just a catch-all for anything that may come down in the future. Um, it also helps cover us with the recent Supreme Court decision, um, regarding sexual preference, sexual orientation, and, and gender. Um, so that was a suggestion of the city attorney, which I greatly appreciated. Everything else that's been added into that section came directly out of the prior section, um, regarding the council, which is sort of mirrored them together.
Well, I make a motion, we table this till our next meeting, uh.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Number five.
Consider first reading of an ordinance authorizing the city to approve the gas franchise, the Kansas gas service.
Well, as we talked about, um, at the work session, um, the, the, uh, franchise agreement that was approved earlier in the year, um, was missing a, um, a section that, um, provided a, um, a, well, there was a one percent, uh, franchise fee for, um, transport customers, industrial, um, classified transport customers. And so, um, that's going to affect, um, three, three businesses with a higher franchise, um, tax if, um, we don't amend that, so.
It was from one to three to five percent, now we're taking back to one percent.
Right, correct. And you speak on three, three existing customers, um, they're large industrial, and they're only transport customers, they don't actually buy their gas from, uh, uh, S C A S, but they transport on their own pipeline, and so. And so the ordinance in front of you, um, it is has a few changes to what you approved the other, uh, few months ago. It, in the definitions, on the second page, it adds an industrial customer, and, and, uh, it basically describes the three customers that, uh, that we're talking about. On the volume, volumetric rate, then it also, again, identifies those transport customers, and, uh, and then identify that one percent is, is their rate. And then in the franchise grease, under section three, it then adds that, um, that, that rate for those, for those, um, transport customers. And then finally, uh, as I was looking through the, the previous discussion on the, on the franchise agreement, that you guys wanted to see a reopen in five years, um, it's a twenty-year franchise, and so that is still in here.
For five years.
Yeah.
I'll tie it up for the function.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I, I can't see us, you know, charging five percent, you know, for our biggest, uh, customers like Cree Stone and stuff, I mean, that to me is just not, you know, not a good thing, I don't think.
That wasn't our intention.
Yeah, I don't, I agree.
It wasn't our intention anyway, we just hope it's not that, I think, and we're looking at the, you know, the little ones, not that one, so.
What they said, I mean, is, is that, uh, they were doing sort of what Andrew's been doing with a lot of our work, is trying to combine things, they were combining a lot of their documents, because they have so many customers, and this is their form, and then they have to go back in, uh, and tweak the ones to individual customers, they just didn't tweak that one for us.
Okay.
That was, so it was an oversight, we didn't intend it, they didn't intend it.
Okay.
It's nice of them to catch it and bring it to our attention on that, so, uh, you know, I don't know what the, what that'd be, can-
What's the verbiage?
Yeah.
For the ordinance.
It is, uh, consider first reading of the, consider, you could just say, the two, the ordinance authorizing the city for the Kansas gas franchise?
What she said.
I'll second that.
Canyon made the motion, and I'll, you made the motion.
I did.
I'll second that motion.
Is this roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Giger?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Welch?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna do this?
This is going to be very entertaining.
Do we need?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna bet you, and I knew it was gonna happen, I'd bet that works. More of just an informational.
Yeah.
We have authority to do that.
We, we changed the amount.
Is this for, are we ready for city manager updates, then?
Yes.
Okay, uh, in the package there is obviously, uh, the, uh, the calendar of some upcoming things, uh, some of the highlights, um, would be the golf tournament coming up, uh, on Saturday, the eighth. Um, of course, there's pop in the park, Saturday is gonna be kind of a busy day, with the pop in the park, and then the benefit concert and golf. There's a Cali County Legislative Committee on, uh, Tuesday, August eleventh, at the Chamber office. We're gonna have a cora coma training, um, it'll be over at the water plant, if any of you would like to attend, but, uh, that'll be on, uh, August thirteenth from eight thirty to noon.
What, what is that?
Uh, open meetings and open records.
Okay.
Open, yeah.
Open meetings, open records, we've had some before.
Yeah.
Is this gonna be a continuation of what we started, or just starting all over? Do you know?
I think it's a ground-up kind of thing, it's geared for elected officials, so, you know, if you don't have a good basis in it, it probably-
Doesn't hurt to have a refresher course.
No, it doesn't.
There's also some changes, you know, the regulation that passed this year in response to the pandemic, for virtual meetings, has a hearing on that later this month, and at that tournament. And then there's also some proposed cora changes on the feeds for records, I expect I'll go over some of that.
So, yeah, most, you know, all of our committees, subcommittees and stuff are here for, for following it, so it's pretty important that we all kind of stay up to speed on that. And of course, your next, uh, study session will be August fourteenth. And then, uh, Rod sent us memo out today, he is, and I don't know if you want to mention or say anything, but, uh, he's having some, uh, issues with well nine, and it stopped producing water, so he's, uh, gotta go to work to get that up and running again, and, um, if he give you some estimate, the cost there would be, um,
I, I got just a couple of questions, quick questions. Rod, on that pump assembly has failed, what do you mean by that?
They couldn't produce some water, till we pull it, we won't know if it's the pump or the screen.
Okay.
Okay.
The screen could be plugged off, or the pump may not be pumped right, I mean-
Yeah, might not be, pump might not be getting water up, or the screen might not be letting in that water.
Okay, all right, I'm with you now.
How old is this pump?
It's, uh, it's not really all that old, I think it was eighteen when we put it in.
Twenty eight, twenty eighteen?
Yep.
Okay.
She has, it's probably plugged off somewhere in that screen.
That's what I'm hoping, yeah.
That's what we're figuring, but, uh, like, that electrolysis could do weird things too, and if it is, we'll have to look into-
Yeah.
If the pump is bad, it's probably from electrolysis, and do that, I'll, I'll look into super duper grounding system, take care of that.
What do you, uh, copper wire, grab it off copper wire?
Yeah, we had a little electrolysis in it before, and we added two more ground on it.
We've had pumping units, you know, the, the T's, we had to do the same thing, you know, electrolysis gets in there, and-
Oh, yeah, that'll, that'll surprise you how quick it'll mess it up.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, uh, Josh White and I, uh, went over and met with Ken at his place, uh, last week, and, and so, um, saw some of the issues that he had brought up, um, to y'all. Um, I think it's gonna fit really good, uh, with our comprehensive plan update coming up here soon, so, uh, I, that, um, we can look at that area for, uh, for some zoning overlays and, and things, so.
Well, that whole corridor down the road, you know, from there clear to, to park, it's gonna be probably, as we grow, you know, that's, people are gonna be buying those houses out and putting in, you know, whatever businesses, you know, retail or whatever it is, and that corridor is gonna have to be looked at, because we need to separate the public from, from the business, you know, like, like Wichita and everybody else.
Put in a big fence.
Yeah, whatever they, yeah, whatever it is, but.
So anyway, uh, I think that'll be included in the comprehensive plan, um, process, and that'll give the, that neighborhood an opportunity to have, have a voice in it.
There you go.
I would make, like to make sure Mr. Harter's a part of some of that, at least that part of the discussion, he's kind of been on top of it for the last couple of years, so.
Are you satisfied with that, Ken, or?
Yes, I had a good, uh, I appreciate Randy coming out, and he brought Josh out, they're understanding, and they, they understand what happened there, and what he's doing.
Okay. Have you had any problems with the family dollar?
With the what?
Well, in that family dollar?
Yes.
Are, are they in-
Those people are good.
Are they, okay.
I have a good relationship with the, uh, manager, and he's been great.
Okay, it's, it's just everybody else.
And, uh, what the city did, putting that wood fence up, and that, that stopped that problem.
Okay.
Uh, that, I do appreciate that, the neighborhood appreciates that.
Hi.
We're not having that issue.
Good.
Well, that's good.
Yes, appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you for doing that, Randy.
That's all I got.
One more thing, Andrew, did I see the census as stopping a month short, or did they?
Yeah.
So is that gonna affect-
Decision, yes, they want to wrap up by September thirtieth.
I thought it was gonna go till the first of the year.
Can't blame what happened, it's a DC thing, but, yeah, we're gonna do everything we can to support the enumerators up.
Are we still running behind on that, Andrew, or?
Yeah, well, the whole state is, we're, the state's at about sixty-three percent, and I think we're counties in that same ballpark, so we've got a lot to do. The reports I'm hearing from some of our enumerators are they're having a lot of problems getting people to come to the door, so we'll see what happens, I know census can get kind of creative, and talk to neighbors, and do some other things, but it's never gonna be as accurate as talking to the residents themselves, so. I will say it's, uh, predominantly kind of the same types of people that Tom was talking about, so.
Yeah, okay.
It's not any different of a challenge than what he's doing.
Thanks.
Anything? Motion?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second that.
Sign away.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?